Yeah, they didn't make arrangements yet, have they?
No.
Okay, today is Tuesday, January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. Call the meeting in order with a clerk call the roll, please.
Trustee Zarnik.
Here.
Trustee Feiter.
Here.
Trustee Frankie.
Here.
Trustee Listner.
Here.
Trustee Prakno.
Here.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
Everyone's here tonight, a little quick tip that I learned because of two thousand and twenty, when you write your checks, do not put on like one fifteen twenty. Make it one fifteen twenty twenty, because people are already putting different years on the checks. So if you put in twenty, they could put a one nine after it, they could put a two one after it, they could do things to it and make a difference on your checks. So, little tip, put on twenty twenty on your checks in the future. With that said, we've got a board meeting, everyone's present tonight, we have the pledge allegiance and the invocation from Father Manny from the Saint Nicholas Episcopal Church. Father, if you would, please, everyone, please stand.
Let us pray. We have turned the page, a new year has been born, and God's children, all of us are, look toward the heavens above for guidance and inspiration. Let us pray in earnest and in unified voice for an end to divisive dialogue between opposing forces and differing opinions. Encourage us all, especially those in the highest of office, to implement and employ technology as a positive tool for promoting unity and growth, and not as a weapon for division and belittlement. Strengthen us to tear down the walls that divide and rather build bridges that brings us closer together as a universal people, all created equally in God's very divine and eternal image. Loving God, Creator of all that is good, right, and holy, keep us ever in your parental care and encompassing love that overwhelms us in such a manner we are left with the impulse, the desire to share said grace, said love, and said peace. And so, in a voice that echoes to the highest of heavens, many mansions, we pray together the words that our Savior has given. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory, for ever and ever. Amen.
Thank you, Father. The flags to my right, will the scout lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Just to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated, Father, again, thank you.
Oh, my pleasure.
With all the divisiveness going on, even locally unfortunately, your words hopefully will ring true and people will follow.
Absolutely.
Again, on behalf, I apologize for lateness, there's extra ones for you. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you so much.
And thank you for everything.
You're welcome, I'm glad us not lent.
Good night.
And we do have a young scout here tonight, we'll talk to in a few minutes at the end of the board meeting before we adjourn, so thanks Sean for leading us in the pledge allegiance. Move on now to the approval of the minutes of December tenth, two thousand and nineteen.
I move we approve the minutes of December tenth, two thousand and nineteen, and dispense with the reading.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Zarnik, a second by trustee Frankie, all in favor of sitting in five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, let the record show unanimous approval. We move on to the mayor and board of trustees report, it's been five weeks, Mr. Nekabaka, so we've got quite a bit to go through, bear with me, and I'm gonna make a statement at the end of my report tonight that we'll go through in a minute. Several things happened over the past five weeks. One, first off to everyone, Happy New Year, it's a great new year, a new decade, two thousand and twenty, and looking forward, a very good year for everyone here in Elk Grove, and all committed to this community. Back in December twelfth, Joyce Drenth came by from the Quilters Association, we took a picture, actually it's in the newsletter that just came out, the winner of the Mayor's Award, and she came by, and that quilt took her a year to do, a year, and she's, they get appraisals, that quilt's worth over seven thousand dollars, the one quilt she did. Did a beautiful job, they all were great, but actually hers stood up head and shoulders above all the rest in my view, and that's why she won the Mayor's Award, Mr. Nekabaka, and don't ever call them a blanket, that I learned, don't ever call quilt a blanket, that's not good, I learned that the hard way. On December twentieth, we had the second Bahamas Bowl, went down for it, the makers won a Bahamas Bowl, I know the viewing party went very well, the game wasn't the closest in the world, right, Mr. Nekabaka?
It was not.
But actually, for Charlotte, that's one of the bigger turnouts for teams than the fans that came down, they actually had a tailgate party, over twelve hundred of them were down there for that, so that was nice, and went well. We will be getting the numbers back from forefront, as far as the viewership, the responses we've been getting from Josh, but also from our electronic database and all that, so I'll be bringing back a report to the board, if not, the end of January, early February. We got to March first, any decision about the future, but we'll get all the information by that point, I mean, obviously, we can't hope for another Loves to show up, and that was obviously very unexpected, but did well, and but we'll see what happens on that. On December, what was it, Dare Graduation, no, that was January ninth, right?
Yeah.
January ninth, we had the Dare Graduation at Queen La Rosy Church, what a great turnout, I mean, the amount of parents that show up for that with the number of students is unbelievable proportion, and it's very nice to see them all show up and be part of it, and again, Chuck, you guys do a great job, I know Officer Johnson, this is his last year doing Dare, he's done a great job, and that's a program in the village we believe in very strongly. Dare makes a difference, we support it, encourage it, actually, we do a Dare variation in the high school, so we carry it on, so the message and the connection the young people have with our police can continue on, and we're happy to do that. On Friday, January tenth, Junior and I, Craig Junior and I, announced the wrestling meet between Buffalo Grove and Elk Grove High School, it's kind of difficult, you had Craig and Craig up there, and I was always waiting to see if Craig would address me, and he just never called me anything, he just was, "Well, as you know, it's going," he answered that very well, you don't know if you say dad or whatever, so, well, well, but we're glad we got to do it, and it was good for Channel Six did a great job, as they always do. Then, on the January eleventh, just past Saturday, we had the dedication for the elevator at the VFW Hall, and that was a very special day, that was very nice, very well attended, and I think they were so happy to have that, the village really came through to help out our veterans. We did have a little fun, the contract incumbent, Keely, who's building all the buildings over at the tech center, and they came through like there's no tomorrow, helping out, Keely, Bill Keely, the father who owns the company, what a, how they helped out, but it's funny because when they're leaving, they're going down the stairs, and someone said, "Wait a minute, why don't you take the elevator?" And I said, "Wait a minute, now I'm nervous, if the contractor that built the elevator's using the stairs, now I'm getting nervous," but no, it was fine, and had a good turnout, we appreciate the VFW for all the veterans have done for us, the elevator works out beautiful, a matter of fact Comcast gave another twenty-five hundred dollars that day for any cleanup work that may be done, painting or anything, which was nice, and again, it went very well, Kitty Weiner, who's here, you know, brought the idea to the board, the board embraced it, Castle Chevrolet got a Corvette to raffle off, was phenomenal, Keely, all the people involved raising money, businesses came through, it really was special, and now the veterans, as I said before, they're getting veterans coming back, they haven't been there for a while, because they couldn't go up and down the stairs, so that went very well, and we're appreciative of that. Few other things, I appreciate the board bearing with us on all this stuff, the village, our newsletter that everyone just probably received came out, the nice thing is, you look at what's happened this past year, and it's funny because when I looked at it, I forgot some stuff that went on, but we had, two thousand and nineteen was a big year for this village, no question, from the tech park moving along, and matter of fact, there might be some news coming very soon about that tech park that I think will catch everybody very happy when they hear, right, Mr. Nekabaka?
I would think so.
I would know so, but went well, we opened up a new public works facility, Petrie Public Works Facility, two new fire stations opened up, and think about it, I might as well mention now, our new public works facility, the James Petrie Public Works Facility on Devon, won a national award for the Public Works Project of the Year, that was quite an honor, it's a big honor, and it is a phenomenal facility, and so well received and doing well, it's because we work together with the men that work in that facility, coordinate together, work together, Kobe, to make sure we got it done right, to meet their needs and the rest. Kobe, I know you weren't there that long before, but it's pretty nice and efficient, isn't it?
It's awesome, we're very blessed.
With the snow events, we have a little better than moving dumped or plow trucks around and all, makes it a little quicker and easier?
Yes.
Good, so we're glad, award winning, like I said, a fire station won the award over there on Fargo, as we said, when we do things Elk Grove, we do it once, we do it right, and we do it first class, and we've come through, to win in the third safest city in the state last year, to Loves that we talked about, looking to come to Elk Grove, and the benefits to this community, taxes again, we're proud, the lowest in the northwestern suburban Cook County area, the Elk Grove Cares Program has just taken off and doing well, receiving grants, awards, we're excited about it, but again, two thousand and twenty coming up, a lot going on, the new hotels going at Oakton and so on, the new Bussy Woods Interconnects opening up soon, a new website, and of course, the concert's coming, and who doesn't love the Beach Boys, right Chuck? The Beach Boys coming, so, a lot going on coming up in two thousand and twenty, and so, we're not gonna miss a beat, and we'll keep going, and we're excited about all that too. Also, people may not realize this, but two thousand and nineteen was the third wettest year we've ever had in this area, third wettest, going back to, I think, to eighteen seventy-one. Two thousand and eighteen, the year before, was the fifth wettest ever in this area, and the reason I bring that up is, you notice how much flooding events we've had along Elk Grove Boulevard, JFK, along Saw Creek?
Basically none.
Basically nothing. The Bussy Dam is truly delivering as we promised, we've always said, as great as the new public works facility is, the new fire stations are Chief Michael and all this, by the best public works project this village ever got involved with and got done, was getting Bussy Dam to do what it's always supposed to do, and that is be a dam. It has truly made a difference, and if you want tests, I would say the last two years will probably be about the best tests you could have ever had to see how that dam works, and no offense, Mr. Nekabaka, but it's doing a damn good job, correct?
I was waiting for that.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know. Now, another thing going on, we just got some numbers in, as we know, people are becoming much more health conscious, and it really makes a difference with peoples, my father just turned ninety in August, and you know, it's amazing the health people have, but last year, we are a self-funded health insurance program for our employees, in other words, the taxpayers pay a big portion of the medical bills we have here. Last year, we had our first decrease in our cost for our medical insurance, as long as I've been on the board, so that's twenty-four, twenty-five years, it went down, and we're now seeing one of the reasons why it's going down, and Maggie, I give you a lot of credit, Maggie has been one of the big pushers, we have what we call Pushful Wellness for our employees, and we have over three hundred employees in the village, and we give them different things to help make them a healthier lifestyle, healthier life, when we did the open house at the, at the Public Works Facility on Devon, going through, we were there, the board was there and all that, there's a couple of you asking me, "Well, Mayor, I see a fitness room here." I said, "Yeah, isn't it great, it looks very nice," I said, "Isn't it?" And the guys work out, I said, "They sure do, isn't that great?" Well, I said, "Well, first off, they don't work out on, through job time, they can work out before work, after work, or during lunch hour," and we encourage them to do that, and they said, "Well, why would you?" I said, "Because your dollars are paying their medical bills, and the healthier they are, the less we have to pay, the less you have to pay." And they go, "That makes sense, Mayor," but I told you, our health insurance went down last year, first time, and we just got our annual, each year now, we check how things are going, and you know, we, employees volunteer, they don't have to do it, but they involve in what we call the wellness push that we do, they get involved, you know, get checked and all that. Well, I'm proud to give you the numbers for our annual review, fifty-five of our employees that participate in the program have lost weight and improved their body mass index, twenty-five percent improved their overall health level and monitoring, fifty people lowered their blood pressure, and here's what I'm really excited about, eight of them gave up tobacco, whether it's smoking or some kind of nicotine use, eight of them. The number one cause of cancer in this country, smoking, the one cause of preventable death in this country, smoking, and see, eight of our employees give that up, that's a good sign. So Maggie, you're doing a phenomenal program, I see all the time the signs up, on Friday we're gonna do this, Friday we're gonna do that, it's obviously, they're embracing it, they're doing well, congratulations, keep up a good job, that the employees are doing a great job, and we'd like to see that, because remember, the healthier you are, less time they miss from work, less time they have injuries, sickness, it's a win for all of us, so, good job, and the numbers are verifying again how well it's all been going. I know Nancy, I won't steal your thunder, we got a big roadwork project coming up, so we'll hold off on that, go through that. Next, I know over the holiday weekend, our police do this every year, and there are click at a ticket program, Chuck, I saw the numbers came in, we had two hundred and ninety-four traffic stops, still two hundred and seventy-one seatbelt, people still can't, bad thing is sixty-five rear seat ones still that way, we had five suspended drivers, one unlicensed driver, two uninsured motorists, three hazardous driving citations, four speeding tickets, a speeding ticket with police standing out there, I mean, what can you do, seventeen, I still say, I can't believe only seventeen cellphone, but here's what I liked more than anything else, one fugitive apprehended, so we caught someone that had a warrant for their arrest, you stopped him, good job, way to go on there. So, it went well, again, this is a program that's paid for by the state of Illinois, they pay our police to do this, to make the roads safer and remind people about the safety, you know, that we all should be doing when we drive, it's better for all of us, for themselves, and also for the people around the area. Okay, last thing I'd like to talk about if I can tonight, a lot of things have been going on in this village, and unfortunately, it's almost ramped up over the holidays, I've talked about this for the past several months, today, I want to talk about a few more things that all have been going on in all this. You know, I've been part of this community since nineteen sixty, and I've said this before, I'm saying it, I have never seen what we've seen for the past seven months. It truly is sad, and it's sick for this community to have been going through this. The people in this community, or people visiting this community, or people knew this community, I'm telling you folks now, this is not what Elk Grove is all about, this is not our community we're seeing the stuff they're doing. Good example, they still continue to attack the Elk Grove Cares Program, that program is doing so much good for so many people, the federal government loves our program, it was talked before, the Justice Department calls it revolutionary, they have our guys going around the country talking about what our Cares Program does and how it works, and New York City, I've mentioned this before, New York City's whole program is being emulated after our program, New York City, seven million people, they're doing our program. The state of Illinois loves our program, they loved it so much, they gave a governor's hometown award to the Elk Grove Cares Program, and we won a four finalists to the highest award governor gives out, and that's the Governor's Cup, we were one of the finalists for that award. We've gotten hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in grants to help us run and fund this program, both the state and the federal government, and we're saving dozens of lives here in Elk Grove and helping dozens and dozens of family members go through the tragedy of the addiction, the disease of addiction, we're making a difference. And what's sad is, these folks attack it with lies, they put out racist mail pieces, I've showed you that before, that, to me, is sick. And then we were talking, this past summer, we had a national fueling company, Loves, I just mentioned them again, Loves, chose Elk Grove out of almost anywhere else they could have picked, to come and propose a prototype fueling station here in a village, they chose Elk Grove. That station, if it and when it opens, is gonna generate tens of millions of dollars for this village in taxes, that's tens of millions of dollars to help this community. And what do they do? They attack Loves, because the Loves representative had the nerve to come out and truthfully tell you how he heard about Elk Grove Village, the Bahamas Bowl. Instead of them being happy for the community, instead of thinking, "Wow, isn't that great, Elk Grove's gonna benefit and be thankful that Loves picked us of anywhere else they could have gone?" They attack Loves with lies and smear tactics, that's sad. These people truly don't care about Elk Grove, don't forget that, they truly don't care about Elk Grove, it's all about themselves and their personal gain. Now, for the past several months, they've been attacking me personally, been attacking me many times, every time, basically, what's even sadder is, they attacked my family and my friends. But I'll tell you this, especially over the holidays, what gets us through this is our faith, and we know what's going on here in Elk Grove, we know how good Elk Grove is doing, and more importantly, we know the truth. Despite all the crap they throw at us, we know the truth, this village, I just mentioned, this village has never done better, we're doing great, and that's the proof. If you want to see proof who's right, just look around this town any day of the week, see what's going on, see what's happening. And they're not happy about that, that's why they do all these mailers they put out, they do these robocalls, they got the Light Bright Truck driving around, they had never even breathed a Light Bright Truck by a tree lighting ceremony. Talk about sad people, talk about it, you want these people running this village? Now to top it off, just last week, our clerk just received her twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and twenty-fifth FOIA, that's called a Freedom of Information Request, twenty-five FOIAs from them, it's generated tens of thousands of pages of information they requested, it's cost taxpayers thousands of dollars in man-hours that our staff has to work to put all this together, for what? They're trying to find something that we may have done wrong, trying to find something they can spin into a negative. You know what's funny? They found nothing, absolutely nothing, and I've told this to Mr. Romo, and I'll say it again publicly, he should be damn proud of how his staff runs this village. We do things right, we do them honest, and we do them transparently, that's the way good government should be, and it drives them nuts, it drives them nuts, because they can't find anything, they're gonna keep trying, but they can't. And the funniest part about this, they use outside law firms, they use these other law firms, now, we don't know, heck, they're one of the law firms they use specializes in marriage, now, what marriage and village government has to do, I have no idea, and we've asked them, "Who's your client, who's requesting all these FOIAs?" And they say, "Well, we can't divulge that, we can't give that up," but they did make one mistake, in one of the checks they submitted to the village, under the memo section of the check, I've got it right here, a copy of it, under the memo section, it says Snyder FOIA, S-N-Y-D-E-R, enough said on that, but the bottom line of all this, again, it's a sad day with people doing this. Now, there's people challenging the retroactive term limit referendum, and please remember that word, retroactive, that's the key word in everything that you see going on here in this village, and the reason is, they have to have that word, retroactive, in there, because it's not about term limits, it's about retroactive term limits, they want this board gone now, not eight years from now, they want this board gone now, they couldn't have won in the past election in April, so they're turning to the backdoor way of doing it, by having retroactive term limits, which means six of the seven people up here are gone within about a year, next election, we can't run again, out, and the reason we know that's important is because the lawyer for Tim Burns has said publicly numerous times that if the word retroactive, or the retroactive part of the term limit question is thrown out, he will fight it to the Supreme Court to keep it in there, that's how important this is, and he made that statement again just a week ago, so retroactive is the whole thing behind this, bottom line is, they want this board out for their personal gain, they want this board out for their own advancement. Now, the challenges to the petitions went before the electoral board, the electoral board's normally made up of the mayor, myself, the senior trustee Nancy Zarnik, and the village clerk Lori Murphy. Nancy and I recused ourselves from the hearing, which is the right thing to do, because it can affect ourselves on the board, so we recused ourselves from the hearing, so Judge Sullivan, Cook County Judge, she, her position is?
She's the head of the county division.
Head of the county division, appointed two individuals who are independent, actually very experienced in election law, to fill our spots, so they had hearings, and what did these two independent, experienced appointments find? They threw the question off the ballot, not once, but twice, they threw it off, and guess what happened? Tim Burns' lawyer has now challenged it, it's now in the circuit court, just as we said before, they can't give up that retroactivity, and that's what was being challenged, the state law forbids that, they're challenging the state law, because they need that word on there to make sure they get what they want. All the neighbors and friends here that live in this community, and the next part I'm gonna talk about really is probably the saddest thing of all this, and it's very disheartening, and the main thing is, Tim Burns. You remember back in July, Tim's group hired outsiders to come into our town, they ended up lying, deceiving our residents and neighbors to sign the retroactive term limit petition. Now, why do I say they lied? Because right here is over two hundred and fifty sworn, notarized affidavits from our neighbors, our friends swearing that they were deceived and lied to in signing the retroactive term limit petition. They're told, "Oh, it's for Congress, oh, it's to oust Mike Madigan," one guy had the nerve to tell quite a few people on one block, it was for a deck variation. Over two hundred and fifty of our neighbors and friends gave sworn affidavits saying that these people came into our town and lied to them, and said, "Well, why would these people have done that, why would they have done it?" These outsiders were paid five dollars a signature, so they basically would say whatever they had to to get that line signed, so they can get their five dollars a signature. My view, that could be, or should be, that should be fraud, in my opinion. Then Tim Burns puts out a robocall over the holiday week, that he approved, a robocall he approved and put together, and in that robocall, he implicated that I was in the Bahamas on the taxpayers' nickel, I was down I was down there working for the taxpayers in this community, but he said I was on their nickel. Nothing was further from the truth. We have said, and it's been documented in the press, it's been done on TV, it's been in our newsletter, it's been covered by broadcast, all the channels when we first put this out, that no taxpayer's dollar would be spent on any cost, me or anybody else, that went down to that game. Tim knew that, but he resolved that lie still to go forward and put out in a robocall to this community. But the worst of everything happened last Saturday. When the independent electoral board was here in this village, sitting right in these chairs, going through the questions before them, the electoral board said of Tim Burns' actions that he exhibited a pattern of fraud. I'll say that once again. The electoral board said that Tim Burns exhibited a pattern of fraud. Thirty-nine people, thirty-nine people turned in sworn, notarized affidavits stating that Tim was not, was not the person circulating the petitions they signed. Thirty-nine of our neighbors and friends turned this in. Tim swore by signing this that he did circulate the petition and witnessed the signature on there. He swore that. Thirty-nine people said it wasn't. Matter of fact, some said it was a woman circulating the petition. Tim's only response was, oh, they used an old picture of me. Well, unless Tim's wearing dresses nowadays, I think it's pretty hard for someone to think it was a woman doing it. Remember, the electoral board said Tim exhibited a pattern of fraud. Please don't forget that Tim Burns is a two-time elected official on our local boards. Two-time elected official, both times, one time I administered it to him, he swore an oath to honesty and integrity. He's a member of the Boy Scouts of America, and he exhibits a pattern of fraud? That's sad. That's actually sick. So in closing, all I'm going to say tonight is, Tim Burns owes this community an apology. And if I was him, I would pray God for forgiveness. That said, we'll move on to trustee's report, um, trustee Prackno.
Okay. Just a little reminder, I know we have been exceptionally blessed with good weather the last couple of months, but there's still a couple of months of winter ahead of us and we could get some snow. I always encourage everybody, um, if you have a home and you're out shoveling your sidewalks and driveways, please continue to do so. If you have neighbors that need help, please help them with their driveways. We have a lot of pedestrian walkers out there, seniors, people walking their pets, children walking to school, so just if we do have that kind of weather, please be a good neighbor and help, help your neighbor out. And the other thing, on a happy note, I would like to wish a belated birthday, January third, to Paul Petzel. Congratulations, a big one, Paul turned ninety.
Mr. Petzel, way to go.
And he's celebrated with his family.
Happy birthday, Mr. Petzel.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Schmidt.
Yes, I just want to reiterate what you said about the VFW. It was great to be at that ceremony Saturday and, uh, had to finally get the elevator well deserved by those and remember the sacrifices that they made for us and for our country. And I also attended two retirements this past week, two police officers, Kevin Finnan and John Osward, they'd served many years here, and I wish both of them very well in their retirement. And that concludes my report.
Start on your tutelage.
Yep.
Thank you. Trustee Listener.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also was at the dare graduation at Queen of the Rosary, and it was very well-attended by parents, which is always very nice to see. And, uh, and of course, being at the VFW, it's always great to be with those people, and that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Trustees Zarnik.
Thank you. I wanted to tell you about the Elk Grove Rotary Club. They're having a fundraising event on Thursday, February twentieth. It's a reverse raffle that will give you a chance to win five thousand dollars as the grand prize, and there are also twenty consolation prizes. There are only going to be two-hundred tickets sold, and the ticket cost is a hundred dollars. But that includes dinner and two drink tickets, and that's held at the Belvedere Banquets Hall. You can contact any Rotary member for a ticket, and the Rotary gives us so much time and the funds back to the village, to the community, so let's support their work. I also want to announce that, uh, the annual scholarship program in this year and in the future, it is now going to be the Zarnik Heffern Scholarship Memorial Fund. We are doing, again, this is usually, uh, the six-one-thousand, we're increasing it, we're doing eight one-thousand-dollar scholarships. So we're really looking forward to the applications that were going to be coming in, and those will be available by the end of this week. Uh, and that concludes my report.
Eight thousand? Way to go.
We, the, the, the residents and friends, uh, have really supported us, and, uh, each, each time it has grown, and we're just thrilled, and now, uh, we want to be able to increase that and give back to the students. And, you know, the students, the youth is our future, and that's what we have to support and make sure that those children have a good start.
And I see Jim, because I know Jim helped you a lot.
Tremendously.
Doing this all, and Jim was so important in this park district and the village.
And that was one of the reasons we wanted to make sure that he was also honored, uh, by not only the program, but by the residents that support it.
That's great. Congratulations. It'd be nice to be out there golfing today, wouldn't it, Mr. Knickerbocker?
Maybe not here.
Maybe tomorrow somewhere.
Maybe tomorrow afternoon.
Okay, trustee Feiter.
As many of you know from listening to me and others here speak about, uh, our relationship with, uh, the city of Pernik in Bulgaria over the last two years. Quickly to remind you about that, you know, they came to us, came to our mayor at one point and said, you know, there's a lot of Bulgarians in Elk Grove Village, they live here and they're, live in the surrounding communities, and, um, they wanted to have one of the cities in Bulgaria become a friendship city with us, and perhaps in the future become a sister city with Elk Grove. And a large contingent from the city of Pernik came to Elk Grove, visited here, saw all the things we had, and, uh, last year, uh, Chief Walsh and I, uh, visited there for a big festival they had in Pernik, Bulgaria. Pernik is about twenty to thirty miles outside of the capital city of Sofia. And this city, or this year, they invited us to come back. The mayor and I both got an invitation this, the mayor couldn't make it, but he, you know, he said, Pat, why don't you try to go? And, um, it's, um, I said, okay, I, I'd like to go back because they've had an election there, and the mayor of their town that wanted to establish this relationship, she was defeated, and a new mayor came in, and I thought, well, I, I don't know what this is going to mean for our future relationship with this city. And last year, uh, the chief and I were made to feel so welcome, and it was so nice to go there, the way we were treated. So I said, okay, I'll go, and I will pay my own way, and, um, the mayor agreed to this and the board, and I was going to go back for the Serva Festival this year. Again, that was that big festival where people wear costumes and it's, it goes way back in their history, the tradition of this, and people come, tens of thousands of people come from all over Europe and from other places for this, this big event every year. Well, trouble developed this year. The city of Pernik hasn't gotten any rain or snow, uh, any precipitation for months and months and months and months and months. Their reservoir is empty. They are rationing what water supplies they have. And, um, they are really, the mayor's declared a state of emergency. They're asking that water be shipped in from other parts of Bulgaria to help them, to save the city in effect. So they canceled the Serva Festival, but I already had tickets because I, they just canceled it about a week ago. And I, I wrote to them, I said, what should I do? And they said, come anyway, Pat, we'd love to have you, we'll take you around, you'll meet the new mayor, and the deputy mayor's been corresponding with me, uh, seems like a really nice person, been very helpful. They're going to arrange for us to see places there that we haven't seen before and do all kinds of things. And the, my friends in the Bulgarian community are arranging for, our local community are arranging for me to have a, a driver to take us around in, uh, uh, Sofia and in, uh, Pernik. I'll be staying in Sofia because they have water and I like to take a shower, so I'll be staying there, but, and, uh, so it's, um, it'll be interesting. I will meet with the mayor and I'll see how willing he is, and I'm bringing gifts that our chief has put together and that our village has put together, our clerk, uh, to give to the, um, uh, mayor and others there, um, again, to reestablish this relationship, and I'll let everybody know at our next board meeting how it went. And that concludes my report.
And Pernik, um, they're kind of transitioning from a cold community.
Right.
Into more industrial like we are.
Right.
And as we change from the old way of doing industrial work to more high-tech industrial, they're doing so a lot of, lots of common things between the two.
A lot of common things.
Sounds, thank you, uh, trustee Frankie.
Okay. No, I just will, everybody mentioned VFW was great, uh, seeing that elevator operating. I just want to make a statement that I rode the elevator down with trustee Schmidt, and he continued to jump up and down and trying to get it to break, and it did not. So I do appreciate that for, uh, the testing we did. And, uh, just one other add-on, because I was, uh, uh, well, I won't say strong-arm, but I had to buy my tickets for the Rotary, uh, party. But, uh, you can also buy, um, the ticket for a hundred, but you can also just buy the forty-dollar ticket for dinner and the drinks. So you can go as a couple, buy one ticket, so for a hundred and forty dollars, you get two people in for the party, because that's what I paid tonight, that's how I know. So anyways, I just, I wanted to bring that up, and, uh, that's all I have.
And it's good for the Rotary Club because, you know, they've had tough weather conditions for Rotary festivals.
Rotary festivals have been bad.
And it's really hurt them a little bit, so this is a way for, raise the money. All the money goes back in the community to make it better, and it sounds like it's going to be a fun night.
It's unique, they explained it.
They have other prizes going on.
Right.
Other raffles, split the pot, you know, game tickets to the Hawks, Cubs, stuff like that, so it should be a fun night. I was teasing Uncle Billy about how they're going to draw the tickets out because they want to draw down to the final ones till you get the big one drawn.
That's why they call it reverse.
Yeah, and what's neat about it is, I said, well, I'd be interested when they get like to the final four, where they all say, let's go together, we'll just split the money or, you know, because they could do something like that. So, um, it should be fun to see how it goes, and it's always fun, when you're around Rotarians, you always laugh, there's always something to laugh about.
We have to.
So it should be fun.
The Lions Club used to do that.
Did they?
Do you remember back in the day?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They did that on, on an annual basis too as a fundraiser.
It's a good idea.
It's really fun.
Okay, move on to accounts payable warrant. Now, I know our first one's back to November thirtieth, that's because we didn't have the final billing on some things, so I got a first due November thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
In the amount of two million, eighteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents.
We have a motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Listener. Don't worry, Mr. Knickerbocker, that's on your paycheck, it's coming up. Uh, Lori, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Feiter?
Yes.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Listener?
Aye.
Trustee Prackno?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye.
Motion passes six to nothing. Now, Mr. Knickerbocker, your turn. Trustee Zarnik for December thirty-first?
I make a motion for the accounts payable warrant, warrant of December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, in the amount of ten million, three hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars, and yours forty cents.
Second.
Oh. I told you. Thank you, trustee Zarnik. We have a motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee, uh, Listener. If there's no objection, record the votes previously demonstrated, six to nothing. And our last one is for January fourteenth, twenty twenty.
We make a motion in the amount of, uh, for the accounts payable warrant for January fourteenth, twenty twenty, in the amount of two million, nine hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Listener, and without objection, record the votes previously demonstrated, six to nothing. Tonight, we have considered agenda items, A as in, what do you think?
Attorney.
What?
Oh, you're going to say P as in Perkies?
No. P as in Petzel.
Oh.
Oh, yes.
Excellent, right, Mr. Petzel? Attorney Petzel, that is. Um, fair enough, A as in attorney and P as in Petzel? That's very good, Mr. Knickerbocker, way to start the year.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I need a motion?
So, second.
We have a motion by trustee Frankie, second by trustee Feiter. Any questions, comments, concerns from staff or elected officials? Anybody in the audience here for considered agenda items tonight? If not, and without objection, record the vote as previously demonstrated, six to nothing. We move on now to regular agenda, we have no items. Um, planning commission, Mr. Romo.
Uh, Mayor, Board of Trustees, you should have received a, uh, finding of fact from the planning commission pertaining to the property at two-twenty-eight East Devon Avenue. We were petitioned or requested by the property owner to rezone the property from B-three to I-one with the purpose of re-subdividing it for, uh, new industrial development, which would be located right next door. And the, uh, planning commission held two public hearings on the issue. They provided the village board with a finding of fact by a vote of eight to one to recommend the re-granting and re-subdivision of the property, and the purposes for the construction of two industrial buildings totaling a hundred and sixty-two thousand square feet.
Is a petition here tonight? Oh, thank you, thank you, you're fine. Um, now, this is for people to understand, this is the property where Powell Tree used to be located at, uh, Mikey Worth, uh, Z Best used to be located there, uh, Bill, the concrete guy, uh, basically, it's from the, the strip shopping center where you got the shoe cover guy, uh, the shoe guy, that shopping center to the south or west of it, all the way down, um, is where this is going to go. They're going to build two buildings, um, they are going to be well-screened and distance from the residents that back up on the street that's behind them because they got two-hundred feet of comm ed property plus the other things, so if it done, it'll kind of, um, start more the development along Devon Avenue that we're seeing happening now. So, um, that's what happened on that. Any questions, comments, or concerns from any board members on this? Seeing none? Okay, um, yeah, we have to have the attorney prepare necessary documents. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Listener. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, let the record show unanimous approval. So you do not need to return, uh, it'd be on the agenda, um, two weeks from now, it'd be a mere formality, since the zoning, uh, planning commission, I mean, proved it eight to one, it was unanimous here today, so we want to thank you, we thank you for working with the village. I know we had some issues to work out with you, and you folks worked with us on that, we appreciated it, and we look forward to your development. We think it's going to be in Acetel Grove, it'd be good for the community, we thank you very much for picking us. Thank you. And you're more than welcome if you want to go, yeah. Anything on the zoning board of appeals, Mr. Romo?
Uh, that concludes our report for the zoning board of appeals and the planning commission.
Thank you. Youth committee, trustee Frankie.
Uh, the scholarship forms are now being sent out to the three local high schools. They're also available online on the, on the village website. Uh, we are giving away seven one-thousand-dollar scholarships, uh, we're going to have to top it next year because of, the Zarnik Hefferns have to beat us by one now, so, uh, it's only good for the kids, so we'll have to get a little higher, so, uh, that's great. You should, uh, obviously, uh, apply for all of these, uh, it's, it's free money, uh, and you need it for school, believe me, if you, if you know what it's like to pay for a college, so.
Your parents need it for school.
Yeah, well, yeah, well, a lot of these kids are paying their own way too, and that's very important, it's, so- So please follow the, the rules when you get the paperwork, but we're gonna be collecting these until May fourth. Don't wait till the last minute, please, because there are always people that maybe put off for the last week or don't mail it in time and they don't get in. So start doing this pretty soon, but the forms are all available. And like I said, you can visit our website to see what schools are at, obviously, Conet, Elk Grove High School, and St. Viters, and then you can get them online. So we'll be talking about this for the next couple of months. So that's all I had.
Between the two, fifteen thousand dollars. And lots of you see, a student wins yours and yours, which is fine. That's two thousand dollars, that's, I mean nowadays, it's barely books, but it helps.
But you got the Character Coalition, you got everybody, I mean, there's, there's all, the Rotary, I mean.
Lot of money.
Yeah.
Okay. Business Leaders Forum. Okay. No offense, but what is yours say?
Petrel.
Well, it looks like trustee Petrel.
Thank you. Trustee, matter of fact, no offense, but when I was doing the accounts payable warrant, I mean, when I was reading my report, it was showing December instead of January, that's why I was getting kind of confused. So it is trustee Listener. What brought back old memories, trustee Petrel?
Gee, I didn't prepare, because I didn't see many.
He didn't do anything.
Everybody, trustee Petrel, I say it.
Trustee Petrel.
Trustee Listener, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. On December twelfth, there was an open house at Siemens. There are several companies from Elk Grove, and I task it, attended. Their personnel gave presentations on their CNC, I guess that's computer numerical control products, and the software they developed to monitor this equipment. Very interesting stuff, even though it was a little difficult to understand. Most of the software was cloud-based, which made it even more interesting. By the way, Siemens is a company that's doing the village, it's gonna coordinate and install the new water meter program, so they're a huge company. By the way, in two thousand nineteen, we made forty-one ambassador visits. And I think that's a little low, but.
That was in the newsletter.
Yeah, I know, but I still think it's low, but.
Newsletter's never wrong.
I can't argue with you on that. Anyway, on December nineteenth, I attended a presentation at Enclave by John Dallas promoting the Makers Wanted workshops. In fact, they started this morning. The presentation was actually pretty well-attended, and I believe six to ten companies have enrolled in the chorus, and at least two people from each company are attending. And it should be very worthwhile for them. And the classes will be going for ten months, they skip August, but, and there's still openings if anyone's interested, you could call three one two, six four three eight thousand to get more information. And our visit to Fiesta T was canceled again, but we're hoping to get that rescheduled early this year. And that, well, wait, one more thing. There's a master class tomorrow evening at Enclave. The presenter is John Bloomberg. He's a consultant to CEOs who has written a book with the same title as the presentation, which is Strategies for Success: Return on Integrity. So that looks like a good event. And on January thirtieth, we're gonna take a tour of Harper College. As you know, we've been working with Harper to develop a workforce development program to get many more people that are needed by our companies. All of them have been mentioning that's one of their big problems, is getting help. So we're looking forward to that visit, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Cable Television Committee, trustee Listener.
No real report. I just hope some of you got a chance to watch some of the Christmas classic movies that Ross Rowe has made available. They're, they're really something special. I, I think he should show them all year round, but anyway, that's all I have on cable.
Thank you. Health and Community Services, trustee Zarnik.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that despite the bad weather last Saturday, we had thirty-one blood donors for the blood drive. Our goal was thirty-six, but we appreciate all the participants, which included nine from the fire department. Thank you, thank you, thank you. That concludes my report.
Information Committee, trustee Listener.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Reminder that this year's Citizens Police Academy begins February sixth and ends on March twenty-sixth. The classes will be on Thursday evenings from six-thirty to eight-thirty PM, and the class size is limited to twenty-four participants. Is it filled up yet? No. So if you're still interested, please get your applications in, visit the village website for additional information. Earlier, I mentioned the new water meters. In fact, yesterday, I think I received my letter, welcoming letter, and you should be getting them. If you haven't, you could go to the elkgrove.org/watermeter to get information. But Siemens is answering, or handling the program, and it really looks interesting. In fact, I got a question today from a neighbor, and I asked Mr. Romo about it, but apparently these meters allow you, if you want to check your water usage at any time, you can go online and get a reading. So it'd be good if you're doing some lawn watering over the summer, and so it should be a very interesting program. Thank you, Mr. Romo, and that concludes my report.
And that helps the residents, just like the smart meter for comm ed. First, remember how they used to do it, estimated, actual, estimated, and all of a sudden you get walloped sometimes in the summertime and all that. But what's nice about the water is we can monitor, instead of waiting for the bill that comes out every two months, we can monitor now on a daily basis. Also, we see someone's water spike through the ceiling, we know, okay, there's something wrong. People will be, a lot of people in the wintertime go out down south, you know, snowbirds and all that. The pipe freeze or something, that pipe could fill that crawl space for months, we'd never know it. And they're responsible, we would pick up on that, because we get notice of that, and within a day or two, we could be out there stopping it, saving those residents thousands of dollars in water bills, and stop maybe damage to the house. So it's really gonna be beneficial. So when they call, don't be afraid, don't be shy, these are first-class organization, they've worked in other towns all around, and it will truly be beneficial for you to get that installed. So we encourage you to get that done quickly. It doesn't take that long, about a half hour. And they're in and out, and, you know, it's good for you if you can do it. Trustee Listener?
Yeah, just one more thing, Mr. Mayor, just to remind the board, there's a ribbon cutting at Tata's Pierogi on this Wednesday.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Boy, this week's flying by. Anyway, it's at four o'clock, so if you can make it, it should be great to see it, and the weather still is pretty good tomorrow.
And they give out samples.
Oh, they do?
Yeah, because we went to original ribbon cutting, and now they moved to a bigger location with the new development, Tani and Devon, and they doubled the size of place, and they're very good. So that's not a bad ribbon cutting to go to.
Okay, well, I'll be there.
Okay, thank you. Recycling Waste Committee, trustee Feiter.
Yes. Just before Christmas, I was, I made an appearance at the Living Hope Church to give a presentation on recycling to fifth-grade Girl Scouts. I want to say this first of all, the Living Hope Church, when I went there, the pastor greeted me, took me around the church and showed me all the rooms that it has, and it's really big, I didn't realize how big it really is. And he explained to me all the different projects that that church is doing for the community. Very impressive. They do it awful lot, and they do it on their own, they do it kind of quietly, but they do a lot, there, a lot of good things happening there. And my presentation with the Girl Scouts went really well, I think. Sometimes a little hard to hear what they were asking me, but their parents were all there, and they helped and chimed in, and in fact, a lot of them had questions themselves. And the girls seemed to be very insightful by the things that they did ask. In fact, and then one of the parents asked afterwards if she could contact the village, and gets flyers that pass out at Stevenson School about recycling. So it was, it was a good session, I was happy to do it, I got a chance to show that film on recycling that we made a year or two ago, and very good session, and then I got one in February with the senior group. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Feiter. Parade Committee, trustee Zarnik.
We're planning the next year's parade, and it'll be on Saturday, September nineteenth. The theme is My Favorite Things. That gives you so much ability for ideas on what you might want your unit to be. On Tuesday, January seventh, I attended the Community Character Coalition meeting to announce to them that we wanted to acknowledge their work in the village by having them as our twenty-twenty parade grand marshals. We're fortunate to have this organization working and representing the village, the village of residents. The next parade meeting will be on Monday, February third, five-thirty, Room E of the Zetic Municipal Building. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Zarnik. Personnel Committee, trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
No report.
Judiciary Plan and Zoning Committee, trustee Prakno.
No report.
Capital Improvements Committee, Ms. Roadlady, trustee Zarnik.
Okay, now, here we go. On December twelfth, the Capital Improvements Committee met to review and discuss the street maintenance program for this year. This includes the resurfacing of nine point seven-five miles of streets and the rehabilitation of curb sidewalks and ADA-compliant curb ramps. The MFT program, that's four point three-eight miles, has an estimated cost of one million, five hundred and three thousand, four hundred, uh, six hundred and forty-five dollars. The village has also reserved a hundred and eighty-five thousand of MFT funds for roadway patching and concrete work. The Business Park Program, which is two point nine-four miles, has an estimated cost of one million, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars, and that will be funded from the Business Leaders Forum account. Also, the intersection of Nergi Road and Rawling Road is scheduled to be resurfaced. In addition to the twenty-twenty MFT program, Vermont Drive and Gibson Drive are proposed to be rehabilitated using the full-depth reclamation process. The committee discussed standing water on village sidewalks. An engineering consultant with the village for drainage will be making a presentation to the board regarding this subject, as well as the rear yard drainage, in February. The committee approved the proposed twenty-twenty MFT street maintenance program, and that was on item N on tonight's agenda. And that concludes my report.
That's probably one of the biggest and most mileage we've done in decades. That was good. We're starting to address it, and we have existing funds to do it.
Yes.
It's not like we're raising tax to pay for it, so that's good. And I'm looking forward, we're all looking forward to that report come on February. That's a big issue with us. I, I still say we should do that program I was talking about, where we put all the sidewalk water issues onto Brantwood, and the rest of the village's streets would be perfectly fine.
Seemingly fair.
Yeah, right, Mr. Knickerbocker said it's fair, legal. The entire legal department agrees. So, that's, I'm only joking, if you live on Brantwood, don't worry. Airport update, there's none at this time, even though I have been invited to speak to the ONCC on January twenty-eighth. And so we'll be going that day to talk to the ONCC about the Fly Quiet Program. Midsummer Concert Classic Series, Mr. Knickerbocker, let's see how up you are. We're gonna open up with, on the Fourth of July, with who?
Daughtry.
What's his first name?
I don't know.
Close enough. Chris Daughtry. Okay, the second concert?
KC and the Sunshine Band.
That's his first name.
KC.
The third concert?
Brett Michaels.
You're doing very good.
Brett is his first name, is, you just.
Yeah, that's what counts. And we finish up with one, I think you finally know, am I correct?
I do know this one.
This is the first one, I think.
Whatever. The Beach Boys?
The Beach Boys, with Love, was it Mike Love? Mike Love, yeah. So it's gonna be a big one. Good year. You excited?
I am.
Yeah, we're gonna see you dancing?
Probably not.
Good, that way people will come then. Okay, so they'll be come soon. Our next community event?
Memorial Day.
It is Memorial Day.
It is.
Which will be indoors?
Yes, sir.
Indoors, well-retented, and they have an elevator already there, so we're okay.
Yes, we're good. Plus, it's on the first floor.
It's on the first floor too. Okay, so that's good. No items on our Liquor Commission, report from our beloved village manager, Mr. Romo.
Happy New Year to everybody. That concludes my report.
And our village clerk has announcements about early voting?
I just want to say Elk Grove is an early voting site again. Early voting will begin March second through March eighth, and then again, March ninth through the sixteenth. Hours are posted on the website. Feel free to contact the village clerk's office if you have any questions.
Thank you very much, Lori, appreciate it. On finished business, I'm a little close this time, as usual, I see nothing, so we're done with there. New business items tonight before we go to the public. No items? Mr. Sean Burke, what chup are you at? What school or church? What church are you at? Okay, so you live on the west side of the village? Okay, so what grade are you in? Seven? Okay, oh, second? Oh, seven, okay. But that's why I, so you go to Mead? Okay, play any sports? Cross-country? Keep you in shape, that's good. Okay, any questions for the board tonight on, I know you're doing citizenship? Any questions? Okay, well, when we're done, come down, I got some stuff for you. And we thank you for coming by tonight, we wish you well with it. And gonna be an Eagle Scout? Attaboy, I'm telling you. What they say, more presidents were Eagle Scouts than were not Eagle Scouts. That's very, yes. That's a very impressive thing. Trustee Schmidt was big in the Scouts for a long time, getting Eagle Scouts and all that. So he used to help us on Memorial Day thing all the time with him. So that's a very good thing, path you're going down, young man, keep it up. Attaboy. Okay, any other questions besides Mr. Petzel feeling good?
Yes, sir.
Ninety, congratulations, Paul. You're doing great. God bless, that's great. And I apologize, I knew you got trustee Feiter coming in February. We, we wish you well, I hope things go well, that'll be fine. Now, when am I coming, in April? Okay, so we're set for that.
Oh, that seems better.
Huh?
Like that's better? No, we only know smart aleck thing about Brookhaven.
Be careful, a new lawyer Burke's gonna come after you.
You already gotta expect it.
Okay, okay, any other question? Oh, yes, our four friends from the cemetery visit, did you want to dress us tonight? Mary's the most informative person I've ever met on our cemetery. I truly, I could listen to you all day, talk about the history out there.
I had so much fun with you on this, and still, now I'm doing the actual paperwork to document everything that we have to be able to give to the Park District and the Cemetery Association and the Historical Society.
Get a copy to the village, I'm serious. I would love to see that.
Absolutely, and we'll give a copy to the library too, so that.
Thank you.
They have what we have. But we wanted to thank you. The support that was given to us by the village during that ceremony, and for anyone who didn't attend out there, you missed something. That was, it was a lot of fun. It was cold, it was windy, we needed a slightly better sound system, but that was the road's fault, not ours. ours. Um, but, uh, it was phenomenal ceremony. I think, um, everyone enjoyed themselves. Uh, tremendous representation from not only this board, but the general politician group as it was. It was, uh, quite exciting. And, um, the, uh, state DAR was very excited with the amount of coverage that was given and the amount of assistance that we got from everyone. So we wanted to thank you very, very much.
Well, we're, first off, as you know, in Elk Grove, we only do things first class.
Yeah.
Secondly, we're honored that you allowed us to do that. We learned, this board, we talk about two revolution, we only want two revolution, let alone one. We have two in Cook County. Um, we will make sure you have a better sound system next year. That won't be a problem. Um, but it was very impressive. You had Congressman Roger there. We had State Senator Murphy, State Rep, uh, Mustman there. Um, you, it, it was, I've never been some, I was, that was an honor to be there. We thank you for inviting us to be part of it. That is part of our history sitting right there.
Yeah, the congressman bringing his son to it, I thought, was one of the best things of all. The, and the amount of children that there were there.
Yes.
Uh, and it got enough publicity this time around. I think next time around, we'll get a lot more of the younger ones out there, because a lot of them have been talking to us about how that, they wanna know things about it. So, which is very cool.
We thank you. You're the, you should, that we should be thanking you for being willing to take the time to do the work, the effort. You put a lot into it, and it's part of our history.
I just did the research.
Well, it's the village's history, and we can't thank you enough about that, because it truly is a remarkable cemetery.
It's incredible place.
And how many hundreds of thousands of people between the towway, aren't on the road, drive by it every day, and barely notice it. And they don't realize the history.
And, you know, right down to that last day, that last day when we walked in, the Cemetery Association said, "We forgot to tell you. We, we buried another veteran during the summer." So we ended up with another one on top of it. And it turned out to be quite a story, too, because the gentleman had died the twentieth of December the year before. His wife had died on the twenty-third of December, and they're both buried in the cemetery right next to each other. But we were able, he doesn't have a headstone. We were able to, at least now, he has a marker out there, saying his name, saying his service.
It's amazing how many don't have headstones out there.
It is.
And how many old ones don't have some. Maybe that could be a project for the future that we could...
Something that we're looking at.
Embark on raising some funds and getting the true recognition those veterans deserve.
Yeah.
And, um, bless you there. That'd be, that's special.
Yeah, it's...
We've had some conversations with, um, the Elk Grove History Museum, so we're gonna be working with them, with the Park District, a little bit, um, for next year. So we're still working, well, next year. It's this year. We're still, uh, we're still working on that, but we, we, we do wanna make it a regular event.
I know you have to do the date they pick. I mean, October fourteenth would've been a little nicer, but we understand you gotta do the date they pick and all that.
Yes.
But, um, 'cause it is pretty out there in the fall, when the leaves are changing, the forest reserve across there, all that. But no, we, we, again, we thank you for your work, your effort. You're making our village better because of your efforts, and we thank you for that.
And we're honored to be able to do it.
We look forward to seeing you again.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Anything else?
Public comments, anybody?
Pardon?
Did you say public comments?
I talk to all the public.
Is there a public back in the corner?
They're hiding, they're hiding back there. We can talk about District Fifty-Nine if you want to. We have a...
Public, public enemy.
You had that last night, so... Okay, um, nothing serious. You guys, anything you wanna add? No? Okay. Um, with that said, the first meeting of twenty twenty, Mr. Knickerbocker, is done.
Good.
Gotta remember, twenty, two thousand, we were all worried about everything crashing and...
Oh, oh, and your comment about checks. The younger population's probably saying, "What's a check?"
Oh, yeah. They have no clue. Mr. Knickerbocker said, "What's a check?" He pays everything in cash.
It's good when you have it.
But he always turns around. I don't know what that means. Click it out, whatever. Um, we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion with trustee Feiter, second by trustee Zarnik. Lori, call the roll, please.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Listener?
Aye.
Trustee Prackno?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye.
Trustee Feiter?
Yes.
Motion passed as six to nothing. Folks, have a good evening. See you in two weeks.